This is Robert Linden, I'm calling to order the capital outlay committee meeting for today, Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. It is 5:33 PM. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to apply in Jesus' Republic, where righteousness, one nation, one God, indivisible, with every degree and justice for all. Thank you, and we'll launch right into our agenda. We have a review of the capital request and discussion around those requests. So first up, we have the sewer department. We have a representative.
Yes, we have Chairman Paul Jolly. And we have, and we have a commission about what's on with us as well. Mr. Chairman, can I pull their budget, their proposal? Just give me a moment, we can work off that. So it appeared that they they submitted ninety thousand dollars, just over ninety thousand dollars improvements, capital improvements in this fiscal year's operating budget. And then they're proposing in 2024 a new three-quarter ton four-wheel drive truck to replace this, a current superintendent's twenty seventeen-year-old vehicle. So that's what we have, that's been, that's what we have been submitting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So that, it's a fiscal year 2022, that's a current year, right?
Yes, and that I don't, so that I don't believe in, like, Mr. Jolly, if you, so if you're able to help clarify, so as I understand the needs, so in the existing sewer enterprise's budget, there is, there are capital, there are about ninety thousand dollars worth of capital projects in the FY '22 sewer enterprise budget. I've been talking with Diane earlier this afternoon, so I also understand that in the proposed FY '23, in the FY '23 sewer enterprise budget, that the sewer department is actually proposing to fund within its budget additional capital improvements as well, am I correct?
He's muted.
You just have to unmute yourself, Mr. Jolly.
Mike?
Yes?
I'm not sure if Mr. Jolly can unmute himself. Sometimes he has a little trouble with the Zoom meetings.
Okay.
That's why I'm also sitting in, but yes, you are correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna try to like, so Mr. Jolly, I just, there you go, perfect.
They're all set now, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, sir, how are you?
Okay, how you doing?
Not bad.
On that annual capital expense, we got a hundred and fifty thousand. We're not really sure, you know, we know we're not going to be able to raise that. But what we plan on doing is funds from the capital expenditure in the current 2022 budget will be used to fund the ninety thousand dollar estimate project to repair the Dyton Power Plant pump station. And that's, that's what we say, we're not going to be able to do, our pump stations, they're really starting to get tired. They're down all the time. So we've started to rebuild them before we ran into bigger problems.
Okay.
What will be left, you know, from the expenditure that we have, we'll we'll apply that towards the following year, or whatever we get enough. But it is important that we get these power stations cleaned up. And that's about it. Anybody have any questions on that?
So this is going to be funded out of the sewer enterprise, correct?
So the FY '22 budget, just in hopes of clarifying where we are. So last year, based on the, based on the pump station analysis and the estimated cost to replace the, I believe, the very high urgency pump station issues, those, those costs totaled approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, so based on the information here, and I believe also in the FY '22 budget, the ninety thousand, three hundred dollars of those, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of costs that being funded this fiscal year and is the remainder being planned for FY '23 then, Mr. Jolly?
What was that again? You come in cloudy.
Right.
Repeat it again.
Yep. So the FY '22 budget, I believe it includes in the existing budget, ninety thousand dollars in, in capital cost to, to upgrade pump stations. However, that leaves a difference of sixty, of approximately sixty thousand dollars to hit the one fifty that was actually, that was the funding, that was outlined in the study. So does that mean in addition to what was funded this year, oh, you need additional sixty thousand dollars to complete those very high urgency upgrades that were identified in the report?
Yeah. What we did, we did a study on all the, all the stations. This one at the pump station at the, the power plant is in dire need of upgrading. So what we figured, we were looking at maybe a hundred and fifty because the study showed that this is the kind of money that we would need to upgrade that particular station. But we realized we can't do it all at once, so we'll take it from the capital expenditure, whatever is left from the '22 budget, and apply it, we do it yearly if we have to. We're only going to do things we can have the money for.
So, so you budgeted the ninety thousand for FY 2022, and that's, and you have that money. And the remaining roughly sixty thousand dollars you're going to, of the very high items that are on your, your study report here are going to be funded in FY '23, is that, that's, that's the plan?
That sounds, so the way we're going to do it right now.
Okay.
Everything, everything is subject to change.
Right. And those, and those, and that, and the, the source of your funding though is coming from your sewer enterprise revenue, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's, Paul, that's kind of really the purpose of why we're here is we just want to make sure that any of the capital projects that you have coming up in the next year to five years, we're starting to plan for, and we figure out how we're going to fund them. Typically, the sewer enterprise has funded its own capital expenditures through its, its own enterprise and has, has, to the best of my knowledge, in the roughly ten years that I've been part of the finance committee, has never asked the town for a penny to spend on capital expenditures. And, and if that's the route we're going to continue to go, that's, you know, my hat's off to you because that's, 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 you're always funding your own projects and you're not coming to the town for additional funding. There may come a time, a point in time where an emergency occurs and we have to do something about it, but for right now, this is your plan for now and moving into the future, correct?
That's it.
Awesome, fantastic.
So, so actually, like, I think it was a few weeks ago, Mr. Jolly, Mr. Woods, so, so there was a sewer commissioners meeting I attended, so then we talked about the availability of Opera funding to make sewer upgrades as well. So we're trying, so we're trying to take an inventory now, we're trying to take an inventory now of all the potential additional sewer projects that are out there, whether they're upgrades, whether they're sewer technology, whether they're generators or whatnot, because we do have the ability, we have the ability in a limited faction to address some sewer needs through Opera. So when we're trying to take an inventory of what those are and how we might be able to fund those, I don't, like, I don't, like, I don't necessarily want to add projects to the list, however, but if there were, if there are like other needs out there that haven't been identified yet, that actually should be identified, so if we could have a conversation sooner rather than later, so we can talk about the availability for, we can talk about the availability for Opera funding to help fund those issues, if that makes sense.
Mike, if I may, please. Speaking of that Opera funding, I understand that North Dyton has some new fiber optics and we could upgrade the pump station across from 620 Spring Street. And I was going to ask you if we could use funds for that. But everything else is okay, and I do want to say that that ninety thousand, three hundred dollars is an estimate. It's not a solid number, but it's a, it's a, it's an estimate.
So, so if I could, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay?
Yeah, keep going.
So the ninety thou, so the ninety thousand, three hundred, Woody, was any of that built into the FY '22 current budget?
Yes, and that was the estimate we got from our engineer.
Okay. So, so, so Woody, my question to you then is, I'm looking at, at this pump station project list where things are categorized from very high all the way down to low. And, and the very highs add up to a hundred and fifty thousand. So, and if you budgeted, if you've got ninety thousand from an estimate, is this covering all five of these very highs and, and the, the, what's in this report is, is, is overestimated? Or is this only covering a few of these items? Can you provide some clarity on that?
Well, no, that, that's to restore that pump station that's at the power plant. As far as the other pump stations that we have, you know, periodically, we have to buy pumps and grinders and that, those kind of things. You know, we have to have those things on, on hand in case a pump goes down. We need to have a backup pump ready to put in, you know, we can't wait to order one.
So I'm looking, so I'm looking, so Woody, like, if, if it's strictly the power plant that we're looking at, what's on this report is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now you're telling me your engineers only have ninety thousand, three hundred as an estimate? Which number is the right number?
Well, that's why it's called an estimate.
No, there, there is information forthcoming on that project that's not revealed yet. That's, that pump station has to be retrofitted, and we're still waiting for more info on it. The one fifty is going to be a closer number.
Okay. Anybody from the committee have any questions? What I've heard, what I've heard, I'm going to recap what I've heard, which is essentially FY '22, ninety thousand, three hundred dollars is budgeted out of the sewer enterprise, they're going to cover that cost. There's no ask right now for any additional monies. FY '23 is going to be the remainder of the funding to cover these very high items, which is going to be roughly sixty thousand dollars, potentially more, based upon what Mr. Ferris said and what Mr. Wood said in terms of the fact that these are just estimates at this point in time, okay? And that's, and then there's an ongoing list of additional projects at the various pump stations that need to be tackled, that are going to be handled by the sewer enterprise through their funding at this point in time. Anybody have any questions on this? I don't. Anybody on the phone?
Yeah, there's, there's one thing I want to bring out is, like pumps, it will take us maybe three, four months to get pumps, if we can get them. So that's one of the important things that we're, we're trying to do is to upgrade so that we can get a fresh supply of pumps at a, a better price than what they're doing. But the time factor is the big thing. The longer we wait, the more we start playing Russian roulette. Well, we can't get any pumps, we got to shut them down. That's, that's why we're trying to do this the best we can in the quickest manner.
Understood, thank you very much. Any other questions? All right. I'd like to thank the sewer enterprise for being here. The, the truck is, the truck is also, I believe, being funded out of the sewer department, correct? Their, their request for the truck?
Yeah, we're not going to ask the town to buy it for us.
All right.
Maybe we can get, maybe we can get Pure Oasis to buy it for us.
All right. Discussion on sewer enterprise, anything else? All right. Thank you, and our next agenda item is then to go to the historical society.
Commission.
Commission.
There is a difference.
Yes. Uh, so requests from submitted by the commission, unfortunately, I don't have directly in writing.
They're up here as well, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Being Zoomed, that's helpful too, from the eyes.
So we have an ask basically, twenty five thousand dollars per year with the exception of 2025, which is forty five thousand dollars. How, how are you being funded today for your request, in, in terms of updates, is it, is it just?
We've gotten one grant last year through the CPC, which is going to be reimbursed through, half reimbursed through survey and planning grant through the Massachusetts Historical Commission. So that's funding the project that we're presently working on, which is, two phases are completed and will be completed by the end of June. And that will identify ninety four properties and resources, identify and document them.
And when you say identify and document, are you saying then that that documentation is going to, that's, that the results of that is where we need to invest to make upgrades or repairs or whatever, like you said.
No, what happens is by identifying them through through this process, the Mass Historical Commission keeps a, a web, a database of all of the properties across the state. The first part is to identify it, the next part would be evaluation for like the National Register of Historic Districts, nominated and approved properties to that actually opens up some incentives for property owners and for nonprofits and municipalities, it opens up some grants. And we do have the North Dyton Fire Station is an historic building, Segregated Schoolhouse, Old Town Hall, and our public library. Three of those are currently on, are part of the list right now for the, of the ninety four properties. So, when you go through this first step, then you can evaluate against the criteria for the register of historic places and see if that will open, if they get on that, then that opens up some funding possibilities for repairs, rehabilitation.
Okay. So is this twenty five thousand dollars that we're seeking annually? Is this, is this an ongoing cost to continuously be reassessed?
What happened is, our past county historians and past historical commissions did work on this because it started like in the seventies, but there had been no updates done throughout the years. So now we're looking at kind of playing catch-up to the updating process. Some communities have this always like ongoing as they were moving forward, but unfortunately Dyton didn't. So we're doing a little bit of catch-up right now.
Do we have a long-term plan in place for, for like, are we going to like do a reassessment every five years or every seven years or every ten years? So that these types of costs, I mean, it seems, seems silly to me that we spent twenty five thousand dollars to identify ninety four properties today and then another twenty five thousand dollars next year, and we're only going to identify two more?
You need two.
Well, well, let's say that there's, there's only two more that qualify next year.
Oh.
So, 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 you know, do you see where I'm going with that?
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, it's like, where do we get the biggest bang for the buck? Is it, is it, do we do a reval every five years, every, every seven? And does a historical commission have a plan to do that? Once we, if we can get that kind of outline, then we can start controlling our costs better.
Right. When I got on historical commission, of course, the, the yearly budget is small and we're at a thousand dollars, you know, level funding. I would anticipate, I would say that that, the cost of the updating for the preservation piece of it really should be built into the historical commission budget on a yearly basis. But again, that hasn't been done. So when you only have a thousand dollars to work with and have only had five hundred to a thousand dollars to work with, you can't do this kind of work. So, no, we haven't talked about a long-term plan, we've talked about where we want to go, we've talked about learning how to do the survey updates ourselves, but it's one of those things that I think has grown into its own little like job kind of descriptions, like for preservation consultants. But we're certainly going to try out some on our own to see if we can do that. But it's a matter of our budget can't sustain it, a thousand dollars.
Right, right, and, and that's, and that's, I think that's the balancing act we have to do here is, how, how we get you more annual budget to allow the commission to better maintain the properties, not just, not just the, the physical properties, but maintain all this, I'll call them certifications, registrations, whatever it is that you need to do with the state and with the federal government to, to, to get, to get these properties recognized and to then allow us to apply for grants to
Right.
continue to maintain those properties. And I think that's, that's a very worthwhile effort. So I, I think, I mean, I think from a capital outlay standpoint, it's not like we're coming in here and asking for a quarter of a million dollars all the time. But, but I think what we need to look at is, and I know the budgeting process has already kind of started, is if you could, and I think, Mike, this was probably the best thing is, is if we can get, we know, we know you've been level funding a thousand dollars for the last, I don't know how many years. But, but let's come up with a budget that addresses what it would cost to do the things that you guys could do today in the next fiscal year in potentially, you know, the next, up to the next three years, let's say. And then start figuring out whatever additional roles and responsibilities that the commission would like to take on that are cost-effective for them to take on so that we can start moving money away from the capital ask and into the operating ask. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I truly believe that that's, we, that's the work of the commission and that's where the money belongs. But for us to go in and say on our operating budget this year, we want twenty thousand dollars more or twenty five thousand dollars more is not realistic.
Right. Right, so, so that's why we're going to, we, we should build it up, we should build it. So if you have a thousand dollars and you think with an additional twenty five hundred dollars, you could do a lot of the, let's, I'm just going to throw something out there. Can you do deregistration all on your own? For an extra twenty five hundred dollars, and you get all ninety four properties registered annually? Whatever, whatever the situation that, that case may be. But you guys could do it because you know how to do it in this. But that's what it would take for us to do it ourselves. Fine, let's, let's take that on. Let's continue in the, the following year, let's identify another one or two things that we can take on that, you know, I'd rather see us spending the town's money on a, on a small increasing basis as opposed to paying some outside consulting firm some astronomical amount to come in and do an assessment for us.
Right, and I don't know, I guess one of the things we have to find out is, I do know that the Mass Historical Commission prefers any of the work to be done by a professional. Does it have to be? Who knows? Can someone learn to do it? Probably, you know. Do we have the personnel and the people that are inclined to do it? Maybe, you know, so there's a lot of ifs that go with that because we're all volunteers. So there's definitely, you know, worth looking at and worth having a conversation about. Because we'd like to see it be a, a larger piece of what Dyton is all about because Dyton's history is so important. And our historical past actually can add to our, our future. Because if you have properties that are recognized, you know, even with historical markets and we do have a historical market program, people come to try some tasks that are historical in nature. So then, once they do that, then they want to know where to stop for lunch and, you know, so it, it does add.
Yes. I agree.
I just think what's unfortunate that, you know, we're in the position that we are where we can't, and at times we're good that that budget wasn't built up.
Okay, and then in 2025, we have an additional request for forty five thousand dollars. This is for the schoolhouse, Segregated Schoolhouse. So maintenance and usage issues and parking and ADA accessibility. Sounds pretty straightforward to me. And these are, this is just architecture and plans. This is again based on today's, today's dollars.
Right.
So, I think it's worthwhile for us to plan for it. It is one of the most noticeable. no noticeable historical landmarks, if you ask me, in the, in the town. Um what I would ask for, for you to do is just continue to maintain a pulse on this so that if you know that the, the plan's cost might increase by ten thousand dollars, you just let our admin, our town go straight around.
Yeah, I worked with Mike on developing that, you know, it's
It's fantastic.
In fact, that was kind of his idea.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that as we progress closer to those dates, we have more accurate numbers. I know right now we're just, we have a lot of estimates.
Right, right.
Um and, and maybe you'll get some insight through the work that you're gonna be doing over the next couple of years in terms of what it might cost for that as well. Um it, it just helps us to to become better at estimating and forecasting uh what we need to do here.
The commission's also working on that as far as, because right now it's just not being used for anything. It's, it's storage, it's holding some artifacts and stuff that we're inventorying to figure out what we wanna do with.
Done. How do you get other?
But we don't want, so it's just really sitting there, so we're developing a goal of like, what is it gonna be for, a mission for, and, you know. Um so that we have a purpose that why, why do we want to put the money into it? Is that the question you wanna answer too?
Uh huh.
So I have a question then, that forty-five thousand dollars for Segregated School, are you going to CPC for that?
That's what's why we listed one of the funding sources as being yes.
And could you explain to us, you had the first phase of the identification of those ninety-four houses. What exactly is the second phase?
The second phase is done, that's where um she finalized the, the ninety-four properties and also um gave us three sample forms of what the, the documents will look like and the res- the resources that were on that. Um so that was that, so now we're into the third phase where the rest of the properties will be identified and documented. Um so each property will have its own sheet. It's, they're pretty detailed as far as um the architectural style, architects have known, um some of the history that goes to the building, and then the, where the, the resources that were used to find it, so. Did I answer your question?
Well, that was, that's the first twenty-five thousand, so the second twenty-five thousand that you're asking for. What is that gonna be used for then?
That would be used for more properties. Um the first one actually looked at, we started with homes that were older than one hundred years old and they kind of centered along Elm Street, Pleasant Street, um some on Somerset Ave, Main Street areas. The second one, FY twenty-three one that we put in for is going to focus, we hope, on um Mount Hope and north of Dyton.
That's also addressed with the CPC.
Yep, yep, we put an application in um to CPC, we met with them, they've taken it under advisement. We also applied for the survey and planning grant for that, but that was denied, our letter of intent wasn't accepted for this round. And one of their reasons was because they generally don't give back-to-back grants to communities. But I figure all they can say is no.
Exactly.
You know, so.
I like that, I like that approach. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for our historical commission?
And what is our, what is the plan that try to increase the budget a little bit?
I think, and so, so Finance Committee will be starting their budgeting process in the um March, April timeframe.
Uh huh.
And um, and so we take the budgets that are presented. So the historical commission can put together a budget on the, on the quick here. It's a big ask, um but maybe it just addresses one or two things and increases your, your budget from a thousand, like I said, to twenty-five hundred or three thousand or whatever the case may be, but they identify specifically what they're gonna be able to use it for and what can justify it. And then my responsibility is being the, the Finance Committee member who's up on the capital outlay committee is to inform them of this discussion and what we talked about, and the fact that there's capital outlay requests out there that involve us buying services to do this type of work when we actually have people in town who have, who have volunteered on the commission um and are ready to step up and actually do this work um and this work that they've identified that they can readily do um on their own without a professional having to be in place. Um I think that's, to me, is a, is a fairly easy sell for, you know, to the Finance Committee. But, but again, we're, we've had asks before um from various departments to um increase budgets significantly. Um and as long as we, we can justify it and the town's people are on, on board with it and I, you know, for, for our town being as old as it is, um there, there's a lot of value in that.
There is, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's a draw, it definitely is a draw.
Okay.
So.
So I know that you're meeting next Tuesday, so maybe should be put on the agenda to update uh the budget that you've not already submitted in the budget, I assume.
Yeah. Yep.
They're very diligent.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and I was gonna meet with Mike anyway and, and set it up yet, but just even though it was level funded and we didn't have to, but I was gonna I wanted to plead my case.
Thank you. So, so, and I'll let, you know, from a, from a Finance Committee perspective, it's, it's the same approach that they, they, you, you just stated with, with putting in for grants.
Uh huh.
Ask, ask for what you want. If we say no, hopefully what we do is we say no to a small piece of it, but we fund other increases to it. So if you came in, you're low-funding a thousand dollars, let's say you came in at seventy-five hundred dollars, and the Finance Committee looked at what you were planning on doing, they said, you know what, small, small pieces here, let's, let's fund it up to four thousand dollars. Okay, well, I mean, it's gotta be seventy-five hundred dollars, but hey, you got four, that's three more than what you had before. So ask for what you, 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 you think is, you can realistically do and cover what you need to do that and um and then that's, that's what the, the Finance Committee is there for, is to say there's a need to increase this budget, we can't increase it as much as they would like, but we can't increase it for them. Um and we've, we've done that, I don't know how many times.
Okay, all right, okay. Um all right, so I'll set it for quite a bit, Mike, and, you know, we'll get it next week at our meeting.
Wonderful.
See what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So uh so I can just run out of quick talk, like, you know, I don't wanna speak for any of the, so I don't wanna speak for any of the committees also represented here, but so this year in FY twenty-two, as we know, we're, so the survey is being funded and brought by CPC. So like, I'm also wondering, because the survey, the work that goes into the survey is being funded by CPC and that's in a lot of use, so like whether the operational costs we're talking about for the exact same purpose might have the ability to be funded on an annual basis by CPC as well. So, so if you follow the logic, uh the CPC is funding, the CPC is funding now oh, you know, like to a small scale, what we're talking about doing, uh like on an annual operating basis. And as a potential funding source for that more regular work, I'm wondering if that type of, if those type of annualized that cost because uh like we're doing a lot of it now in one fell swoop, whether those could be CPC eligible as a funding source. I'm just, it's just a spread ball idea, I don't wanna speak to anyone else uh like who will have to have a voice in that process, but it's just a thought.
Okay, that's good reasoning right there. And that's more down our favor. All right, any other questions for our historical commission? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
That? The fire.
That was an easy one, how's the fire?
Uh, Chief, Chief's easy.
What is that?
That's one we talk more. But, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just call me after.
Pass, I don't want to.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
Okay. What'd you say?
Fire?
All right, Chief, you're up. Feasibility study, hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Yep.
Uh self-contained breathing apparatus. Three hundred thousand dollars. Uh I'm gonna skip over the next one, 'cause that's a few years away. New forestry truck, over ninety thousand. Um and part to note, that's replacing a, what was that, thirty-year-old? Thirty-year-old car truck.
That's repurposed.
Yeah, repurposed thirty-year-old truck. Uh and then we have ambulance, uh and replacing a ten-year-old. Um and then finally and that's, that's a twenty-three and then twenty-four, yeah, 'cause that wasn't enough. Twenty-four, we have a uh new car one.
Obviously, you know me, bro, I'm a reasonable man.
Yes. Uh anytime I see seven digits in a year, I get worried. Um and then, and then twenty-twenty-seven, have a new engine. Okay. So let's talk about twenty-twenty-three, so 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 if I, if I look at, if I look at the, the four requests for twenty-twenty-three and I had to pick one today based off of what I see in the descriptions, I'm saying that we have to do the self-contained breathing apparatus in the RIT packs because we're out of compliance.
Correct, yes.
That's, that's what I'm reading here, just, just right off the top to the, to the naked eye, that's the one we gotta address first because we're out of compliance.
Right.
That's, and that's, that's and sorry, but, but we're talking about people here, that, people's lives here.
Right.
So to me, this one's kind of a no-brainer, okay? Um and I think in all that, we could get the full support of the committee. I don't even think we need to talk about that one. You like that approach?
I, I, I agree a whole lot of them.
Okay.
Um I, I will say that there is assistance fire buddy grants out there um that could be applied for and I, and I would attempt to apply for. Um but his, historically, when they review those grant applications and they look at the town like odds of the call volume and the um amount of money that the town has, they, they typically don't approve those applications. But with that said, where the packs are coming up to fifteen years old, it may help us get approval for that, so it would be applied for and attempted to get through a grant, but yes, they are definitely due for replacement.
And, and it
That makes sense.
It, it doesn't make sense, and it, but it, and excuse my uncom familiarity with the, with the entire grant process, but is it, is it possible, I mean, so I, I, first off, I don't know if you apply for the full amount of the grant of the, of what you need for the grant or if you do a partial, and, and does that help if you, like, say, just, you know, you, you know, when you write the grant, you say, you know, we need to replace these packs that they're fifteen, coming up on fifteen years old, cost is estimated to be three hundred thousand dollars. We'd like, you know, seeking a hundred-and-fifty thousand in grant as opposed to asking for a full three hundred thousand. I don't, I don't know if that approach ever works or if that's something that
No, so
is probably a good amount.
So how the grant works is, is they go by what we have for apparatus and then you have to go for the number of seating, seating positions in that apparatus. So say for instance, engine one has six seating positions. Five of those positions are what they call uh tactical positions, if you will. So we get five SCBAs for that one truck. So you, you have to put in for the number of positions you have of each piece of apparatus. And I have to, when on the application, you put in for what you have for apparatus, how many seating positions there are there, and then you get the SCB, even one SCBA for each seating position with a, a mask and a spare bottle. It's how the grant goes. It's in, in, it would be to fully fund the grant
Okay.
the, the purchase, not, not half or a deserted like that.
Okay. Alright, thanks for clarifying. Okay. So then if so, so the possibility of a grant for that?
Uh huh.
All right, so and when do we have to get that grant submitted by?
Uh, I think that comes out in like April. Um and it's usually, it actually might come out this month and have to be in for April, something along those lines.
And how soon would they respond to that grant?
I think they still haven't made decisions on last year yet.
Right.
It, it could be, it could be a year.
Okay.
So we need to fund this and hopefully we get a grant. Get ready for us, yeah.
Okay.
So how many positions? Like, the, 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 I'm here, I'm the problem.
So there could be thirty-one.
Any other questions about the apparatus purchase? Okay, uh so then Chief, I'll let you tell us what, what would be in your number two slot right now.
So probably the feasibility study. Um station one, it just something needs to be done. Uh the person at the seams, it's becoming unsafe. Um I have one room that's becoming unhealthy that we utilize in with, with mold issues that we've had to um throw a dehumidifier in that space, that's a home room where one of the guys sleeps. Um so it's, it's, it really needs to be looked at what the options are. Um apparatus bay is unsafe with how tight everything is when apparatus moving around, you have personnel put on here and the trucks are coming out of the bay and it's just, it, it, it really needs to be visited and, and looked at to make it more operable and safe for the, for personnel. I mean, we have my secretary during the day, her office becomes a home room at night, you know, it, it just the station was designed as a call fire station, it wasn't designed as a twenty-four, seven, five, but in, in a mess operation. So um it, it really needs to be looked at. Um in, in the prices that Mike and I had talked with Palmer Man Associates, who actually did the police station, um they did, they did the, I believe the feasibility study and where the, the OPI is gonna say project managers for the job. Um and they gave us quotes on what it would be, that's where the hundred-and-fifty thousand came off, but I believe we provided that breakdown. Um and so I, I would say this, this is probably number two. Um or even maybe the number one if, if the grant came through and we didn't have to fund that, you know. Um so
Okay.
And we would just, I think when Mike and I talked to them, it was to look at an addition slash renovation to station one versus just relocating and rebuilding a new central fire station on the geographic, somewhat closer to the geographic center of town so we can improve response times all around.
Yeah.
So the study would take all that into consideration when it looks at it in response times and everything.
Okay. All right. So now you have your choice, well if we do, if we do ambulance. If we do, if we an ambulance or a truck.
So the ambulance fund typically, historically funds the ambulance, so I mean, I would hope that, you know, I don't want to, uh. I don't want, I don't know. The ambulance should be able to sustain itself, and, um.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't.
So we're looking at. Oh, you know, the ambulance fund and what it funds in the operational budget, and its availability to fund, obviously, you know. Uh, we have a history, I believe, of funding the capital purchases of ambulances from the ambulance fund as well, and we wanna make sure that the ambulance fund, guys are continued up. The, the continued availability funds to be able to do that.
So. Just to build off of what Mike says, 'cause I agree wholeheartedly. The, the, you know, Robert, you, you know the history of the ambulance fund, and, you know, the reliance on the ambulance fund to, um. To fund the fire department operations as well, meaning the fire and EMS operations, um, needs to just be looked at. I mean, we look at it every year, but this year, we need to look at what was drawn last year, what the anticipated revenues are for this year. It, it really needs to be monitored and looked at real good this year, and I'm not talking badly about anything that was done, history, historically, or anything that was ever done. That's not my point.
Yeah.
The point is, is there was a lot of money drawn last year, and the revenues coming in this year aren't gonna match what we've drawn last year, right? So it just needs to be watched, so that way we're all on the same page, and I'm not, again, I, I'll re-exercise. Nobody in this room, myself, the accountant, the town administrator, we're not talking anything poorly about anything that was done in the past. We're just trying to bring to light that we have a concern that what's coming in may not match what we're taking out, so we're just gonna watch that. Because the federal government, Medicaid, Medicaid, our two biggest payers, so the ambulance accounts, the receivables accounts, is decreasing what they pay. So the contractual obligations are decreasing, which means our revenues are decreasing. So it just, it all has to be looked at, and that's the information that we're trying to get out there, that's all.
Okay.
Sure? Right?
No, that's.
Yeah, that's.
Fine, fine, sure.
Okay.
Two can be.
Okay. Alright, so. Yeah, we have to look long and hard at what's gonna happen, um, in, in the decision of the ambulance fund. Uh, we obviously don't wanna drain it. Um, and so it could be. Uh, you know, depending upon how, how things shake out, it could be a, a, you know, a partial fund from ambulance and a partial fund from some other source. General stabilization is the one that, you know, really comes to mind, but. I mean, uh.
Sure.
Take a look, take a look at the, at the overall financial health of, of all the accounts. But yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm on board with that, I, I understand the, uh, the decrease in revenues, um, and the reason for it. No fault of our own, but I was hoping, hoping you were saying that, hey, everybody's staying home and nobody's doing anything silly, and therefore we've had less accidents, but, um, you didn't tell me that.
Right.
So.
Actually, you know, to be quite honest, our run numbers are up, which is what's astonishing to me, to look at the amount of runs we've done and see what the revenues are, where they are, is really, it's, it's mind-blowing. We, we, our ambulance runs are up. So it's not like we're not doing the calls, we're not getting billed in a timely manner or anything like that, everything's going out. It's just that the contractually obligated payers are decreasing what they paid, and then you can't go after the excess amount.
Right. So remind me, um. Is, we have two ambulances, correct?
Correct.
This is the oldest one that we're replacing, correct?
It would be at that time, yeah.
And what, so what is, what, how old is the newer one?
The new one's a nineteen.
Okay. So, yeah, so that's, uh, and wait, what, you know, do you recall the fiscal year we purchased that in? We buy in FY nineteen?
I think it was FY nineteen, yes.
Okay. So, so four years difference isn't too, too bad. Be nice if we do, you know, every five years then, and so.
Well, that's, that's what we're shooting for, is every five years. That's what I figured into this, to replace every five years, so we're actually replacing a ten-year-old vehicle.
Yeah, all I'm saying is spread out our cost by five years, not the age. So if we get the vehicles aligned to, so you have a nineteen, if you had a twenty-four vehicle, and we pay for it in FY twenty-four, now every five years, we'd be replacing one. This is, we'll be on a four-six K, and so, you will. If we replace after every ten years.
So when I put this in, whatever it is, it's to replace every five years. So I may be wrong in what fiscal year we bought the one we currently have. Like, when I did the numbers, it's a five-year.
Okay, so maybe.
Five years cycle.
Okay.
And that's, I believe, when I bought the one we currently have, and it was what we currently have, that was what myself and FinCom, when we discussed it at that time, was what exactly like you're saying to go on through the five-year cycle to.
Okay.
To keep it that way.
Yeah.
So you're gonna look at what comes out of that account for those extra costs, making sure that you're gonna have enough food in there, pay for that. So those other costs.
Right, we wanna, we wanna make sure, so if it's, uh, if it's, if, if, if this is three hundred and seventy-five thousand this year, five years from now, it's easily gonna be four hundred thousand. Spread that out over five years, we gotta be saving ourselves eighty thousand dollars a year on your ambulance fund every single year, so that we're ready to pay for that.
So what are the extra things that come from that?
Right.
Right.
So just a clarification that, like, I wanna be clear, because I have heard questions about this. Oh, you know, I mean, the questions about, it's like, everything we're funding out of the ambulance fund is ambulance-related. However, however, we have, Alex, we're looking at our ability to pay based on the revenues that are coming in, that's all we're saying here.
Yeah, and, and, it, it, it may be that the ambulance fund, at this, given the nature of the revenue stream, that the ambulance fund may only be able to support its capital costs in the future and, and none of its operating expenses, and that's just something we're gonna have to figure out.
And that very may well be a reality, there's.
Should've rather been later.
Correct.
Yes.
And, and again, I just wanna reiterate that, his, historically, since I've been chief, we've always worked with FinCom, I've always worked with FinCom to look at that dollar value, know that what we're drawing from it to support the ambulance operation is responsible and, and what it should be. Right now, we really need to look at, I mean, when we make, again, we really need to just look at those numbers and that's all.
Okay, agree. Okay. So that now leaves us with the forestry truck. So we already, we, we have two forestry trucks, correct?
So actually, um, we have three.
Three?
Um, one of them is just a very large vehicle, um, that was bought after we had, it wasn't bought, we thought it was excess property from the federal government, it's a five-ton military truck um, that we got after the big fire on Smith in, um, Cedar, in the, where is now Tommy's Way, Sonny's Way, that whole development is actually where that fire occurred. Um, so that, that truck was acquired then because we didn't have a lot of, a large vehicle to get in the woods with a lot of water. Um. That truck is, work fine, but it's too big to get into most places where we need to get into. Nine times out of ten, you know, the smaller trucks like we have, the one-ton, one-and-a-quarter dump and the one-ton, um, pickup truck that we, we recently took, or the old P3 and turned into forestry one, um, are, are both adequate size, and that's what this price quote would be, is basically another one-ton, one-and-a-quarter-ton truck, four-wheel drive, to be able to get into the woods and the type of areas that we, we most often have to get into.
And that one ninety figure includes all the equipment and everything else for the.
Yeah, there is a tank, pump, truck, it's all included. So I, I, I realize everything the fire pump puts in is big numbers and it's scary, it's, uh. It's, I can't, I can't adjust that, and the, um. It's just the reality that I'm faced with, and it's, it's difficult, believe me, it's difficult. Uh, it's actually a big hit, too, it's difficult to bring these things to the town, and, um, I get it, I do. I understand, but it's, it's, I'm not asking because it's, I wanted a nice brand-new truck, believe me, that's, that's not my interest, it's, it's a need.
Yeah. Yeah, there is such a thing as useful life. And, uh, you know, between all of our departments that are at large capital expenditures, they, they stretch in, in sacrifice. We do a lot of repairs and, um, we, and we do without, without play at times. So, you know, better to ask and be told no than not to ask at all.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Um, so, okay, um. Alright, so that's, that's it for twenty-three, so then in twenty-four, um, a new car one, emergency cruiser. Your car is what? Four years old, isn't it?
Nineteen.
Yeah, so three years old. And this is the, um. This is the, the, um. This is the second car, though, this is, uh. Is this your lieutenant's car, basically? And for inspections and everything and all that, is that what this primary is for?
No, this is, this would, this would be for my car, and then my car will become the deputy's car.
Okay. So the deputy's car is the one that we're technically replacing.
Correct.
And what year is that?
That is a two thousand six.
Okay.
With a hundred and seventy thousand miles.
That's it, okay. And so. So you've been on roughly twelve to fifteen thousand miles a year by the time twenty-twenty-four comes out. You're looking at probably a hundred and eighty-five, hundred and ninety thousand miles on that car. Um, typically, when we get to two hundred, that's that's, that's where the repairs no longer really become, uh, an option for us. So I think this is, um, relatively good plan. I think it's, uh, again, you know, similar to what we just talked about in terms of, of, um. The ambulance, um, where we're speculating on five years. And it's, it's a year-off cycle from the ambulance, so it's, be better for this too, but, you know. Given, given the age of this car, you know, we, we might be able to make adjustments a few years from now to, to instead of going four, about five years, go maybe go six, um, so that we get a little bit of stretch in between, um. But, uh, makes sense, makes sense to, to put the ask in. Um, because even if we don't do it in twenty-twenty-four, and I'll, it'd be good, it needs to be done in twenty-twenty-five. All likelihood, okay. Uh, and this gets us saving for it, right?
Yeah.
Um, and then that's kind of the purpose of why, why we're doing this, is the, the, like, committee is like, let's start at the end, like, just now, let's not wait until April prior to the fiscal year. Oh, okay, look, hey, here's a special warrant from the fire team for a new car.
Right.
Where'd that come from?
Right.
Uh, we, we didn't, we knew about this one two and a half years ahead of time.
Right.
So, um, so appreciate you putting this stuff out here. Same with, uh, engine one. So that, uh, gonna be two thousand, so it's already twenty, twenty-two, coming out of twenty, you know, it's twenty-second year of operation. And, uh, by the time, by the time we get a new one in twenty-twenty-seven, we're working at, you know, the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-eight, actually, twenty-eight year old car, or, or an engine, at least, I'd say.
Yeah.
So, um. Gosh, we're wasting smaller price tags.
I do, too. And, and to be, to be quite brutally honest, with the way things are going, four twenty-five is probably gonna be.
Yeah, yeah.
Five hundred and.
Right, yeah.
There needs to be an inflation rate built into that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, when we, when we just did all of the, the, um, paperwork for the new engine that we have on order right now, we were fortunate that we were able to lock into the price before the inflation factor went in of four percent. So that four hundred and twenty-five, four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar truck will become four hundred and seventy-five, or whatever the number was at the time when we were, we were going through it, so, um. None of this stuff's probably gonna go down in price, if I have to guess.
Right.
But, um, I'm just working with what I know I have on this right now, and.
Well, I think this gives us a little bit more of an advantage than, than what we're used to as well, um. You know, and I, and again, I don't know necessarily the other dynamics behind the purchasing process, um, but, you know, hopefully, with us knowing about this type of stuff, we can possibly order earlier, get locked into a better price, um. Knowing that delivery won't be for however long, you know, three, three, six months in. You know, so, so maybe we're, we're fronting, and I, again, I'm a procurement process, but whatever deposit would be plus, and then on delivery, kind of thing. Certainly would be a worthwhile, uh, for us to look into how, how we can capitalize on, on any, any type of savings in that manner.
Sure. It's a, it's a, it's a yearly time monitor. So from the day that we get approval, and I can say to the builder, we have approval, sign off on it, and then stop building it, it's one year. So, and that's not to build it, that's just to get it, to say that they're gonna design it and, uh, engineer it. And then, like the truck we have now, we signed all the paperwork in July. If that hit engineering, and then it's not gonna hit the assembly line until March, then we won't see it until probably July.
So I thought, I mean, look, then can, like, lease purchase?
We, that's how we are doing the, I mean, we just bought.
So, yeah, so we, we typically will look at that from a, uh, finance committee standpoint when we actually get the, the, the warrants article. Um, we ask that, that we typically get both the options. Um, and then we can make our recommendation based on that. Both the, the fire chief and the police chief have, um, started to become accustomed to that practice um, so that we can make some informed financial decisions. Um, and, you know, from, from their point of view, it's, this is what we need, this is the equipment we need in order for our, our people to do, do their jobs. Um, and they, they, um, they do all the legwork, they, they figure out what equipment they need on the, on the vehicle that they're purchasing, and they get all the quotes and everything, and then they, they give us the two options, and, and then we look at the, the town's financial situation and try to figure out what's, what's best for the town, and, and there have been, you know, we're doing, we're gonna do a lease on this one. Um, we, we did an outright purchase of a used vehicle not too long ago, right?
A lot, correct.
Yeah, and that was, that was. Yeah, and that was, that was a steal.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, you know, the chief probably said at the town. Uh, minimal, six hundred K, minimal. So, um, you know, we're we're quick to jump at opportunities that arise and and and, you know. Both chiefs, again, they do a good job of, you know, giving that information presented to us in a, you know, in a accurate and timely fashion.
Just just go around with nice, because we were able to get into the seven year lease purchase for a very, very great interest rate.
Yeah.
I don't know how long that's gonna last, but the interest rate right now really is.
Yeah, and then, no. If it's still around in twenty twenty seven, that might be the way we're going to do it from there too, we just don't know. But it's um, this gives us a number to work with, and again, you know, chief here, we. You know, talking to the historical commission, get updates on these pricing, and they release new rate sheets or whatever. Just throw, throw them, amend your your request and we'll get them updated and we'll like noted it and.
Sure.
But other than that, any questions for the chief? I don't have it. No?
Sorry, sorry.
Barry, any questions? You can take others now.
No, I don't.
Thank you, Mary.
We're good too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Always.
You're welcome, Mike, if you.
Thanks, Jim.
It would have been more impressive, Tom, if you like, would walk out from like. Alright, highway department. We have a couple of things going on from what I understand. Is that two dump trucks, I'm looking for, is that just something, an arrow? That's two, it's two dump trucks. Two dump trucks, and two different vehicles that needs to replace.
One is very old.
Alright, well. Let's um. Alright, Tom. Looking at your list for twenty three, what's what's your highest priority?
Well, since you, you guys were already talking about the trucks. As a whole, my fleet is average age is two thousand six. Fortunately, we had a period of time where we were enjoying uh. Police equipment, we we got several trucks through the police. Federal government through the police program, which, you know, just during panic, and it doesn't seem to be reopening. Uh, we have three trucks currently that we are currently using out of that program, but those are the internationals. Uh, they had very low miles when we got, that that's a good saver, you know, prior to computer stuff. But uh, long haul, I think we wanna keep the fleet average a little higher, especially with the corrosive environment that we're dealing with. Uh, so, a- as you know, it's hard, it's hard to decide which truck has to be replaced, it's not always the age, it's not always the mileage, it's it's of the trucks. So uh, the two thousand four is the one that we really need to replace. And that's, that's one of our larger trucks, and I, there's a number there that was given for the quote earlier. I think we should add fifteen thousand to that to retrofit of the pile cloud that we're gonna need. Uh, this last storm is a good example, we only had three, three cloud, actually two clouds that could finish the storm because they're high enough to. So we need to change the cloud in that truck, so.
Do you think that number should be closer to one seventy then?
Yes. I I have no problem indicating all the trucks, you know, used trucks, but again, uh. Looking at the whole scheme of things, I think we wanna also try to keep getting that average, fleet average up. So, keep adding the used trucks are not always the answer.
Right.
Yeah, I rounded that to one seventy.
Okay. Alright, so that's the first truck, so then what's number two on your list? If you tell me the second truck.
Twenty three, two thousand twenty three?
Yes, yes.
Alright, I didn't have a second truck for two thousand twenty three, but I did wanna propose that tonight. If for twenty four, I'd like to move that one up to twenty three and move the possible guard rail from Maple Swamp Road to twenty four.
We might have had something, we might have captured something incorrectly then, so we have everything from three except for the.
Yeah, did you put everything in twenty three, Tom?
I did not.
So. So you wanted to complain though? No, no, that's not my.
Cause it is what it is, we're still gonna consider these.
So both dump trucks in here, oh, jeez, oopsies, no, that was me. Um, I'll take a hit on that, Mr. Ferry.
No, please, please, I I'll.
No, no, um, so, um, the. Replacement of the nineteen ninety two was actually proposing just be a twenty five.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Where were you now? No, in two thousand twenty four, I was gonna replace the two thousand two Chevy, but I can consider replacing that this coming.
That's, is that the sixty two thousand dollar one that's up there?
Yes.
Okay, so so that one you had is twenty four, you wanted is twenty three, what we have it in here is twenty three already, so.
Jeez, I really missed them all.
But, but it's sort of created, uh, these two guard rail projects need to be considered, I need more information on Maple Swamp Road anyway, so we can move that up to twenty four.
So you wanna move Maple Swamp to twenty four?
Yep.
And the other guard rail is William Street, Mel Williams?
That one, that one's urgent.
That one's urgent, so William died in twenty three? Okay, and then the feasibility study is still twenty four?
Just one more question, while we're doing this, we we just be able to go down the list and I'll update these accordingly if that's okay? Maple Swamp Ford, Tom. Twenty four?
Yes.
So I just wanna, I don't have any idea, oh, the nine, the replacement of the nineteen ninety two, that's twenty. You had originally twenty five, but I had twenty three.
You you're talking about a different vehicle?
The nineteen ninety two international.
No.
You're talking, Tom, you're you're, you have three dump trucks on here.
Oh, yes, nineteen ninety two, that would, that's for, that's a twenty five.
Okay. And then the one we just talked about, which we wanna change to one seventy?
And that's going to twenty. Yeah, that's still twenty three.
Yeah, yep, and then William Street is staying at twenty three.
Right.
The one ton dump, ton dump truck was originally twenty four, but he's gonna be at twenty three, so that would be fine.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And then the feasibility study, Tom, is twenty four?
We we put that in as a placeholder, Mr. Kim, and I believe.
Tom probably wants to start yesterday, so.
No. We should be able to stay for like.
So the feasibility study, um, would be a placeholder for a DPW facility. I got three more, so like, there's work we need to do. I like, I mean, like, in coming up with a plan, I'll like forward that side as well. So that's why I just have the placeholder, I included, so at least in FY twenty four. So like, over the next year or so, we can actually come up with a plan for that site to inform how we want to go out into a feasibility study for it. That was just my thought, I just wanted to have something documented, so we, so we have a starting point for that.
Right, we have some housekeeping to do before we.
Yes.
You want you to spend that money also.
Yes.
Okay, but we know it's halfway town, we're gonna spend some money on feasibility study.
Correct.
Right now, we'll we'll project it for twenty twenty four, FY twenty four, and uh, and, okay, good. Alright, so now our spreadsheet's up to date.
Thank you, sorry.
So now we know that the oh four F seven fifty is the first one, the William Street is, would you, would you um. Would you spend the forty three thousand dollars on a William Street guard rail replacement before you spent the sixty two thousand on the new dump truck? It's just, it's 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 just a yes or no, Tom, it's it's, there's no right or wrong answer, it's it's, this is, this is, this is your job, it's your everyday job, you do tell us.
Those are apples and oranges, one's for the fleet. And the other one's equipment for the town itself.
But what if, if I told you, I can give you a check for sixty five thousand dollars today, and that's it, that's all you're getting. Would you spend it on the new dump truck, or would you spend it on on getting the William Street guard rail fixed?
I mean, apparently.
Apparently, there you go, there's your priority. Somebody's gonna make the hard decision, it's gonna be you in this case.
I think it's sixty three, you can go.
Sixty two thousand seven hundred and three dollars, I can round you, okay? No, it's like, tried to give you sixty five thousand, but you didn't mention that, so. Okay. So that's the two thousand two. And that number's still good, sixty two seven?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I can think honestly from a prioritization standpoint, that's that's really it. Um, if we look at, um, you want to scroll a little bit, Mike, so we can see the distribution. You know, the, you know, obviously, there's, there's a couple of new vehicles and then the the, the fact that the, the. The price went up to one seventy there, um, so we have two hundred seventy five thousand total asked for twenty twenty three. And then uh, one eleven and one fifty three, so those are a little bit more manageable. Um, at this point in time, that's not to say that there could be future asks for those years, but I I think. Um, I don't think what you're asking for is anything we wouldn't have expected. Any questions for, for Tom?
No, just that the feasibility study, I mean, twenty twenty four, so there's gonna be a capital expense after that, once we get this studied. Have to keep that in mind, that's what I'm worried about building, and that's probably gonna be within the five years.
So like, questions, Alan?
So, so I just have one, like, additional aspect that's not included, so that's not included here, but I will have information very shortly. Um, and that is information from a new pavement management plan, um, that Tom is doing with the building group, did you bring that?
No, the plans, the discussion I have also, but I don't have, the plans be worked on.
Yes, so, so, so one of the things, um, uh, Tom took the lead on, so like, is proposing. Uh, proposing funding, uh, for our existing chapter ninety allotment to come up with a pavement management plan. Uh, right now, roughly, our annual allotment from chapter ninety is right in the ballpark of around three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, which based, so based on our needs, I mean, the, so the resurfacing, repaving, and updating of the utilities on Main Street. Uh, just as an example, fireworks need that alone, so, so it worked, it's what, it's what Tom has always had the uncountable task of really doing. So it is building up our chapter ninety to be able to fund more, so more expensive, so more expensive capital projects, because they've only. Actually funded our roads and printed, so actually funded, funded how we take care of our road with chapter ninety. So what this pavement management plan is going to, oh, you know, they actually come up with and recommend, so like. So like, is, so it's to, so it's to take a more active role in maintaining the condition of our roads before, so before they get to a point of disrepair. So there are things we can do to invest in them as we go forward, however, the cost of that, so it's going to be over and above. So our chapter ninety allotment, which is all we've really traditionally spent on doing so. So that is, so that is either gonna have a, that's either gonna have a capital cost or operational cost or both. So like, I just want to, we should probably in early spring, like, I think maybe have the results of that. So and that is going to be very, so that's gonna be very capital involved. Oh, and I just wanted to raise that as an issue coming forward, because with, so when armed with that information. Is really gonna tell the complete picture of the kind of funding we need in the highway department, if that makes sense?
That's me.
Yes, that makes sense.
So, so with that said, and for example, uh, currently working on, have been working on, not like, range upgrades in various streets. And those streets have sidewalks, sidewalks is what eats up a lot of the money. They they rarely pay, but we can't pay them without upgrading the sidewalks, so. What's needed for this coming spring, and it's already scheduled, most of the work is scheduled right now, because when they come and mobilize, they wanna come into the town once, do everything they need to do. So they're not coming back, I am looking at four hundred and eighty two thousand, a little more than four hundred and eighty two thousand needed to the projects I'm working on, to repair the paving. I currently have on hand by chapter ninety, four hundred and eight, a little over four, almost four hundred and nine thousand, so I'm struggling, seventy three thousand, four hundred and twenty three. That's just to finish the sidewalks, preparing for the paving, and then my next allotment for chapter ninety is coming July first, I could consider paving those roads. So, but, the mechanism, while bringing on the capital out, I need no mechanism to request that seventy three thousand now, which that's where I'm in right now. I don't know how that works, do I, still present something, though, cause that's a, that's involving project beyond the November deadline that fall.
Yeah, so, so the way we want this to operate in in, Mike, we should, we should send a a message out to to our department heads here. Is when you identify a capital need, you just fill out one of these forms and you get it submitted, it could be five years from now. You you recognize, hey, there's some bridge that we're gonna need, is gonna be need to be replaced in the five year time window. Submit that request today, let's get it up on the board.
Okay.
Let's start looking at it, let's start figuring out how we're gonna pay for that, like, what are you asking for, you know, if it's a bridge replacement and it's two million dollars? And you know, you're gonna get state funding for half of it, you still gonna submit it with two million dollars? You're gonna tell us you're gonna get a million from the state, we're gonna have to figure out how we're, and you're gonna, let's say you're gonna spend two hundred and in, two hundred K in chapter ninety money. To help out, that means we're still gonna have to come up with that other eight hundred K, we gotta, we gotta start just jumping in front of these things, we can't wait. Till annual and special to 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 fund these projects and and that puts us behind easel, and that's, 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 that's the target goal there. Is let's, as soon as we find out about them, just go ahead and submit the form.
Okay, so the here and now, I mean, you know, it's a little more than seventy three thousand.
Yeah.
Just one question on that, the seventy three or the four hundred and eight, I believe you mentioned, Mr. Ferry, was that included in the available article funding you have?
That's there, that's still gonna finish the eighty eight party, that we have between School Street and Spring Street, there's a gap, that's just, I need that dedicated to that.
Okay.
Yes, those those projects, correct, and we will include that, but not that number you just mentioned.
Okay.
Right? And that number was chipped away. Right, that's down to about ninety plus right now.
Okay.
After some expenses.
Okay. Great, any other questions? Thanks, Tom, and thank you for, um, and your department for the job that you did over the weekend, it's fantastic. Can I offer the same for them, please? I find it's easier if you butter them up, it's easier to say no to them.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I, I use another strategy all the time.
Cookies help.
Is that why we're last?
Is that what it lasts?
Do you have to bring it up now? All right, let's bring up the police department here.
It's tough, Tom.
My fault.
I just wanna, one of the things, and I actually realized at the end of the, um, the last meeting, uh, there is a communications request, which is not, so it's out, so it's outlined in a, it's outlined in a request form, but not in the spreadsheet, so like an eighteen, an eighteen thousand dollar annual cost for the IMC software. But I believe at the end of that meeting, we discussed it as well, and really discussed that as an operational class as well. So like, that really wouldn't even fit in the capital plan, but I just wanted to, uh, bring that up as something submitted.
Yep.
And so in this first issue, um, we have been able to achieve and fund that, uh, using other funding, and we, um, and that was, uh, we discussed that at, at a seminar meeting, and that was subsequently, sub, funding for that was subsequently approved by the Board of Selectmen. So we are moving forward with that, I'm very, very happy to acknowledge. And, yeah.
All right. And, I, I mean, this is, this is all pretty straightforward from, from the police department right now, you know, the first request obviously taken care of. Um, everything else is, it's basically our, our course of life, right? New, new vehicle every year, um, keep our, our fleet fresh. And then, and then two additional items, which are, um, steel coating, um, the asphalt, which obviously is convenient in practice. And, uh, so it looks like you wanna get that on a three year cycle, so, that's, I think that's as good as any.
Yeah.
Right, um, so, um, I don't have any questions about this, I mean, o- obviously, you know, from year to year, these numbers are gonna change, so all we ask is, when you know what the cost is gonna be for the next year, you provide us with that new number, let's say next year it's sixty seven thousand, we'll update all future years to sixty seven thousand, you know, and let's keep progressing that way. Um, and then when you, um, do submit the request, you give us the lease option and the purchase option, um, what the cost would be, we've typically been funding this directly as a direct purchase, um, but if, if, if we ever do get in a bind, it's helpful for us to know what our lease cost would be. We are gonna need to go that route.
Yeah. Mike, you said something about IMC, the first thing you talked about.
Yes.
About the IMC, now, we've been doing that since two thousand seven, I mean, that's not, yeah, the IMC, that's, it's in a line item, it's out of communications, are we gonna continue that line item in communications? Is that, that's a, that's the way we wanna do it?
Yeah.
Yeah?
It's not a running cost.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna incur it every time of the year, it's, it's, uh, it, it's, it, it sustains the operations of, of the communications department, so. There's, it's not a, it's not a, um, it's not really a capital expense, it's not, it's not.
So one of the things, if we would ever think about replacing IMC or upgrading IMC, that would be a one time only expense. So on that, so that replacement or, like, or upgrade, that would arguably be a cap, that would be a capital cost at that point.
So I know, we typically always purchased, and I, I know you mentioned lease.
Yeah.
There's advantages to almost everything. The advantage I see, we tried it years ago.
Yep.
And, and then it was immediately purchased, right?
Right.
Because of interest, so we wanna try to stay away from that.
Right, exactly.
Um, I think there's a new municipal program that's, that's a no interest kind of a thing, you rent, or you lease three for the price of bottom one. There's, I, I'll look more into it, I'm glad you said it, because I, I totally forgotten about the lease program, but there is a new municipal, uh, program that they launched.
Okay.
It's just a matter of being able to get vehicles.
Right.
Because you were on back there, where you tried to do that.
Right, yeah, yeah, I was, I was there.
You're still on the vice committee, Tom, you're, you're still there.
Yeah. We want people, uh, here, here's kind of what, what, what it gets down to, which is, we're trying to, we're trying to plan better, we're trying to plan years into the future. What have we been doing for the last, what, since I've been on the fighting command? We, we get notified basically through the warrant articles requested by the department heads, hey, we need this for next year.
Yeah.
And how do we plan for that? We can't, okay, so, so any kind, and, and just imagine if, if, um, Chief McGee had to get a brand new ladder truck, right? We, we locked into that thing, okay? But, but we were looking at, and, and Tony had told me about it, he, and we knew from a capital outlay perspective that it needed to be replaced, and we were looking at, back then even, a, a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar replacement cost. But we didn't know when it was gonna happen, but we knew it was gonna be out there, and that's when we actually started jacking, um, I shouldn't say jacking, we started, we started putting more money aside in capital stabilization, so that should we ever need to fund something like that, we, we would have available resources without having a huge impact on our, on our taxpayers. And, uh, and so, so we're just trying to get in front of everything now, um, as soon as, you know, we'd like to know, kind of, kind of mentality. And, uh, and e- even if there's, you know, you think you, you, you're gonna need a piece of equipment, and you know there's a grant out there to get it, we still wanna know about it, and we, what we wanted really go is, you're gonna be going out for this grant, what's the reimbursement, is it gonna be a, a, if we win the grant, is it gonna be a hundred percent reimbursement, is it gonna be a fifty percent reimbursement, so, you know, what's, what are we gonna be up for? It just helps us to plan for it. And so, when we're, you know, so any kind of program that we can identify that's, that, you know, is a municipal leasing program, and we can save money, and go on that route, absolutely, we're gonna start looking into it, we just, we, we had, before you guys showed up, we, we had a conversation with the historical commission here, and, and, um, their ask is, is significantly greater than what their budget is, it's a thousand dollar budget, their ask is twenty five thousand dollars a year, but they think there's some of the thing, some of those things they can actually do for a lot less money than what we would pay out, so let's, let's actually look at increasing their operating budget, as opposed to paying some outside service to come into here and do it for us. Same, same kind of approach, so, so we wanna look at things really holistically here, um, and, and just try to jump out in front of everything as soon as we possibly can.
Sure, yeah.
Any other questions for? Easy.
Good, chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you wanna see me and Lieutenant, who, do you wanna discuss about tomorrow morning?
Yeah, can you wait like ten minutes, I think?
Yeah, I knew you said you were gonna want.
Yeah, that would, that would be amazing.
So if you're available, we, we can wait.
Yeah, if you don't mind, that would be phenomenal.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
And next on the agenda is the meeting minutes, did we?
So those are finalized, Mr. Kim, if we can wait till the next meeting.
Absolutely, so we'll buzz on that. Any other discussion from the committee members?
What's our next step?
Uh, so next, uh, is.
That'll be.
Okay, fifteen.
On the fifteenth. Is there anybody left that we need to?
The school department will be.
Yeah, department, that's right. For schools, and then once we do that, then what we're going to attempt to do is to now co-mingle all the requests from the departments and get a sense of prioritization from our vantage point. Um, and figure out what the total ask is from a capital outlay perspective for FY twenty three and moving forward. So obviously, our priority will be on FY twenty three. And we can probably tag like in this later for twenty four and future years, um, at a future meeting. But it's like, I think the goal is really, let's, let's look at FY twenty three. Any other questions?
I don't have any, Mr. Kim.
Okay, I'll entertain you, a motion to adjourn. Motion has been made. Can I second, I'm not a happy guy.
I'm being seconded.
Mary's seconded. All of us in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, motion is adjourned.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you, good meeting.
Thank you.